Go ahead, Cheryl.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Cheryl Barnes. Welcome to our forum for the Kansas City Missouri City Council First, Second, and Third in District Candidates in the April 4 primary election. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platte Counties, and local Alpha Kappa Alpha Sororii Social Justice Committees. I am a member of this league. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We neither support nor oppose candidates or parties. Our mission is to empower voters and to defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every citizen has the knowledge, the right, the desire, and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like for you all to know the other league members volunteering with me as timekeeper and our Zoom is monitored by Terry Lane. Anitra Steele leads our forums admin team. The public send in the questions via the league's website, L W V K C dot org. Tonight, we welcome Mary Sanchez, Senior Reporter, Kansas City PBS, as our guest moderator. Mary?
Thank you. Thank you for asking me to do this. I am always, I always enjoy doing things with the league. I think you guys just do such important work. And I also want to thank just all the candidates for taking part in this forum. It's, it's important. And I think frankly, it's good practice as you go forward in your, in your campaigns here, just to take questions from the public. So what we would like to start with is just some basic introductions. And we would like to have you just introduce yourself. I'm just going to go through first, second, and third in that order. We will be also kind of mixing that up though throughout the evening as we throw out the questions. So that you'll be able, and sometimes you'll be asked to respond to a question, the first person, and sometimes it'll be the second, and sometimes you'll be the third. That way, you know, you can somewhat feed off of each other's answers, or it won't be like one person is always just first up. Because that'll kind of just, I think, help out our audience a little bit, and it's just more fair. So. Let's start with the first in district candidate that we have with us tonight. This is Mr. Chris Gahegan. We were making sure that we were going to say your name correctly. So go ahead and state your name yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself. And a few perhaps what your top priorities are for your race, your campaign, and candidacy.
Absolutely. Thank you. And, and also thanks to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. And for everyone who ultimately ends up watching it. My name is Chris Gahegan, and I am running for council in the first district. In the new first district, which, which was substantially changed last year in redistricting. So it's all of Kansas City north of, essentially north of Berry Road. From on the east side, the Liberty State Line to the west side, to the Kansas State Line and farther north even than the airport. I'm a Northlander by choice. I've lived here almost 25 years. Moved here for neighborhoods and schools. I'm a father and a grandfather, two and a half years of grandfatherhood, which has been wonderful. Both of my adult children now live in the Northland, and I have two granddaughters who live in the first district. So. I, my priorities basically, I mean, they're really pretty simple. It's to ensure that we provide quality, basic services in the first district primarily, since I'm running in district, but really for all the city too. And those are the everyday things, the trash, you know, infrastructure, you know, potholes, trash, water, and making sure that sewers, sidewalks, curbs are all maintained. It's also to ensure that, you know, our neighborhoods are safe, you know, our police and fire, both are extremely understaffed. And it's the nature of the job market. And so I know they're working incredible amounts of overtime, which is hazardous for them and ultimately unsafe for the city. And then finally, that to ensure that we continue moving forward, by making sure that we continue developing and we continue with larger infrastructure projects, because first district is one of the areas where the city is, is growing fastest. And we need to make sure that we stay ahead of that with those infrastructure projects so that we can continue to grow and expect good things in the, in the first district and for the whole city. Because when the first, you know, first district does well, the whole city does well. What other districts do well, the first district does well. So I mean, it's, you know, I want to see this district do well, because it will be good for all of us. And I want to see the other districts do well, because it'll be good for us here too. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to the second in district, and we have Wes Rogers with us. So go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Yeah, Wes Rogers, running for the second district in district, which is now the southern part of the Northland. And I'm unopposed. You guys are stuck with me one way or another, and I'll, I'll do my best to, to make that people. But I grew up in the Northland. I grew up in Flat City. I went to college in law school at the University of Missouri in Columbia. Came back, I was a public defender for a year. Then I was a prosecutor for five years. And then for the last eight years or so, I've been more involved with our family business than I have practicing law. So we sell and lease commercial dishwashers to restaurants, nursing homes, hotels, that sort of thing. In 2018 and 2020, I, I was a state representative for two terms. So I made it four years. And then chose not to run for reelection. The decision not to run for reelection and the decision run for city council were not related to each other. So I was, I got my fill of Jeff City, and I was ready to go do something else, whatever that was, regardless of my choice to run for the council. And for me on the council, my three priorities are, are pretty similar to Mr. Gahegan's in that. One is, like I said, I'm, I'm a small business owner. I think it's important that we're a city that welcomes and embraces small business. We do some things well already. I think we could do an even better job of promoting and attracting small businesses. Second is public safety, police and fire. Obviously, anytime you knock on doors, that's almost always the first thing that comes up when you're talking to our neighbors north of the river. And then third, of course, is basic city services, trash, recycling, potholes, that sort of thing. One thing I would add to that, and piggyback again off what Mr. Gahegan said, is that I was on the broadband committee in Jeff City. We had some one-time money to invest in the state's broadband. And the conversation on that always revolves around access to broadband in rural communities, which is, which is really important and is something that.
Mister Rogers, you're over time.
You bet. Sorry. Broadband is good.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much. Yeah, we'll, we'll have plenty of time to perhaps, you know, loop back in and discuss some of the issues that you want to take on with a little bit more, you know, context and clarity. And next up, we'll go to Melissa Robinson. Melissa, go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your background.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melissa Robinson. I'm currently on the city council representing the third district. I'm a mother of two sons, Jeffrey and Brooks. I started my public service 28 years ago, working at the Addy Group Against Crime. I was a teen that was trying to find my way, and I started a runaway prevention and intervention program specifically for girls. Now I'm the president of the Black Healthcare Coalition. It's an organization that's nearly four decades old. I've been there for 15 years, and I have been doing for the past 15 years, programming like prenatal programs for young expecting moms and dads. And I'm really excited that we're now celebrating our 15th year of doing that work. It was just recently recognized by the Robert Woods Johnson Foundation for our work. I'm also a Robert Woods Johnson Fellow. I went to U M K C, and I also have a Masters of Business Administration from Webster University. On the city council, I am a hard worker, making sure that things get done and that we're listening to the people. We have a scorecard program that came directly for neighborhoods, and I look forward to talking to you about what we've been able to accomplish these last three, three and a half years, and what we hope to accomplish the next four, four years.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we'll hear from Sherri Hall. Sherri Hall is also running for a third in district spot. Ms. Hall, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sherri Purvis Hall. I am a mental health advocate. I am a mother. I also run a nonprofit organization named Poetry for Personal Power, where we look at the connection between arts and mental health. We provide nonclinical behavioral health in the form of peer support, both one-on-one and in groups. I am a native Kansas Cityan. I have three natural children and one bonus, Helen, Myrie, Elijah, and my bonus son, O.C. I am running for office because I care and because I want to see sustainable change. I wear many hats within the community and have worked in the community for as long as I can remember. As a matter of fact, my first political, real political experience was when I was 15, actually going to the school board arguing for my school not to be closed. After that, I went forward and served in Washington Weekly Neighborhood Association. And that was my first time actually going to city hall with them to meetings and really being immersed in the political structure of Kansas City. I studied at U M K C, urban affairs, sociology, and things that I would like to do when I get into office. Or my focus areas are really social determinants improvement, which would be housing affordability, jobs, and public safety.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, now we're going to go ahead and just move on to the next section, which is asking more specific questions. All right, not large. Start with the ballot questions. Question number one on the April ballot. We'll ask voters to approve a 3% tax on retail sale of adult use of nonmedicinal marijuana, so recreational marijuana. Assuming this measure passes, how should this additional revenue be spent? Okay, go ahead. Let's throw that first to Wes. Wes Rogers?
Yeah, so I was in legislature last couple of years, so it's been interesting to watch this process from medical marijuana now recreational. And I think it's great that there's a 3% tax. Frankly, I wish it was higher. That's pretty low, especially for the share that's staying with local government. That said, we, we do have a mental health crisis in this country. We do have a mental health crisis in our city. And if we're going to earmark that money, I would hope it would be to address mental health and people that need a place to live.
Okay, thank you. Sherri, would you like to take a, take a stab at that one too?
Sure. If that 3% measure passes, I would hope that we would use that money to go towards public safety and not the general public safety budget, but also alternatives. I am a proponent of looking for, again, jobs, affordable housing, and providing other opportunities, including access and expanded access to mental health care. And also those accesses, including multiple modalities that do not have to stay along the clinical line. The opposite of lack is opportunity. So using that 3% to provide more opportunities to those that are most in lead, in need is really critical to our success as a city, to us lowering the crime rate, to us being able to increase the services that we provide to citizens. Another way that we can also use that 3% is also to provide some more, some more funding to small business. As you know, in our city, at least 70% of the jobs are provided by small businesses, especially within the third district. And I would love to provide infusion of funding, some more programs and things of that nature for those businesses. Because again, the opposite of lack is opportunity.
Great. Chris Gahegan, the 3%, if it does pass for the recreational marijuana, how should that tax money be used?
Thank you. Excuse me. I echo a little bit of what Mr. Rogers said, and because we have a problem of violence in the city. And I think that's in part because of reasons related to lack of housing. And we have people living on the streets. We have victims of domestic violence who aren't able to escape from their abusers because they don't have options, places to, affordable places to, to live. We also have issues related, mental health issues, drug addiction issues, alcohol abuse issues. And while the city, even with, you know, with a tax like this, couldn't afford to, you know, provide those services. There are community-based organizations that do provide many of those services, and the city could act as a clearinghouse for those so that we can better connect people to services and then, you know, find ways to incentivize development of affordable housing, whether that's low-income affordable or workforce housing, which in the Northland, we need housing for people starting their careers and, you know, people, you know, trying to, that is working on all the places that are, that are being developed here. So as those are my ideas for using that tax.
Great. Thank you very much. Melissa Robinson?
Thank you so much. It is important for those of us who are watching to know that the council did pass an ordinance to help guide how this funding is being used. And that's why it's important that we have individuals that have experience, that have been there for these votes and know the lay of the land and how, what the next steps are going to be. And so in that ordinance that provides belts and suspenders, if you will, for the taxes, really around how do we address the root causes of crime and violence? One of the landmark pieces of legislation that I passed was the Blueprint for Violence Prevention in Healthy Communities. It's where hundreds of organizations from a grassroots level came and shared, what is our blueprint? How do we address crime and violence in the community? We do have those things that are laid out, and we want to continue that momentum. In addition to that, we have a public safety department, and it's called Partners for Peace. So a lot of those dollars will be spent there as well. I passed legislation around an opportunity agenda that specifically looks at economic mobility and economic development. There's no reason why 100% of our kids who are graduating from high school do not have a living wage employment if they're not going to college or a trade school. So those are some of the things I hope that I will be able to share later about my opportunity agenda that's already passed, that we're working hard to achieve.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on to the next question, and that deals with the ballot number two question. Well, it's actually questions two and three. On the April ballot, we'll impose a combined tax of 10.5% on Airbnb apartments. As these accommodations are often used by visitors with somewhat lesser means, I mean, they're looking for a, perhaps a cheaper way to visit our city, an easier way to stay here without having to pay a high hotel cost. What would, what's your opinion of this tax? Is this something that we should be doing? It's going to be on the ballot. Let's go ahead and start with Chris Gahegan. First up on his answer.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm confused on whether I'm muted or not. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I do support a tax on those short-term rentals, and I believe the money should be utilized to help bolster our codes department and those inspectors that, that are, one, they'll be inspecting these properties themselves and make sure that they're compliant, but also to ensure that other properties in the city are safe for the people who reside there. I know we, we have had an influx of out-of-state and out-of-city investors buying rental property. And I think there's some concern that, that, that those aren't being kept up. And I know post Ferguson, when fines, you know, were reduced substantially on, for code violations, real, you know, to help people who are actually poor and needed those breaks and were being penalized because of those code violations, I think it kind of tipped the other direction. And so I would like to see that bolstered so that we can keep, you know, neighborhoods in good shape and people's property values up if they have rental properties next to them, and certainly short-term rentals. So I would like to see the money used that way.
Okay, great. Melissa Robinson, let's hear your response to this.
Yes, I do think it is really important, and people need to understand that this is a first part of what needs to be done as it relates to short-term rentals. One is it is important that we have the staff to be able to enforce any regulation, but also that this money goes into our convention and tourism tax. And so it's really important that, that those dollars be able to be used to not only spur more economic development, keep our city clean and safe. Our neighborhood development and tourism fund, some of those dollars will go there, which is extremely important to keep our community vibrant. The second part that we need to make sure of is that we have proper regulation in place. Because right now, we do not have, one, the staff to address bad actors. But two, we don't have the ordinances and the legislation to address it. So it's going to be very important for this council and the next council to really look at those regulations. But first, we have to make sure that we have the capacity to enforce those regs, and the tax will help to do that.
Thank you. Sherri Hall?
Yes, I do believe it's important to have this tax. One, at, at the risk of sounding kind of simple here, that tax may actually deter bad actors. It is true that often taxes and regulations deter business from coming into the city. That is a double-edged sword. On one side, some of our policies, some of our regulations, some of our procedures are deterring good investors from coming into the city. But on the other hand, bad actors, especially those that don't register and do not comply with what's currently here, would also be possibly deterred. That being said, those that do choose to do business in the city, that tax would actually help us continue to keep up what we have going here to infuse that with some funding, not just our codes, but the policies and things that have already been passed. So I'm in support of that tax.
Okay, thank you. And Wes Rogers?
So those are all really thoughtful answers, and I don't have a ton to add to that. I, I do support the tax. And I'll say, and Councilman Robinson mentioned this, but you know, a piece of that goes to Visit KC, and they do really good work. And when they're, when they're well-funded, we're all going to benefit from that. So hopefully that money is spent well and in a way that we, that we all continue to gain from it.
Yes, we have the World Cup, the NFL Draft, all of the things. We need those funds.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I suspect on a number of these issues, we'll have a lot of kind of almost collaborative answers here, and that's fine. If you want to, you know, we can, we'll watch our clock a little bit, but somewhat chiming in is okay as well. Next issue we want to take up is the possibility of a downtown ballpark. If the Royals are successful in building a new downtown ballpark, the value of homes nearby will likely increase. I mean, more like that is just probably a definite. How would you guard against gentrification, you know, taking forward too much to where longtime residents in the area, perhaps they would be almost priced out of their own homes? We've seen this in the past where people were hit with proper new tech, property tax rates that they simply couldn't afford. So what would be some of your response for how you could guard against that? Melissa, go ahead and you start here with this one.
I'm sure. I've been doing a lot of work and was, went through a year-long fellowship around this very issue of gentrification, especially for blighted areas. And so some of the tools that we have already been working towards, one, and that we've done even in Santa Fe, is a tax abatement for the long-term residents that are there. And the sweat equity, we utilize the Central City Economic Development Fund to put in those dollars to, to, to bring those properties up to standard. And so that has been a very key piece of legislation. We'll continue to do that across the city. I was very integral, although I don't represent the fourth district, but working on the chapter 353 with the, the west side to make sure that we're addressing some of those issues with displacement far too late. But we were able to get that done collaboratively. The other thing is community land trusts. These are, it's really critical that we start to build community land trust to make sure that the neighborhood and the individuals there have control over the prices, right? And so while I don't have time to go all in-depth, we do have a pilot that's happening in the third district. And we do have some work that's happened in the fifth district with community land trust as well. But we need to invest more in that, and we need to make sure that we're ensuring that people aren't displaced. I live in Beacon Hill. I understand what displacement looks like. I've lived here almost all of my life. And so we have to work to address those, those issues.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chris Gahegan, you go next.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have much to add to what Councilwoman Robinson said. I mean, I wish I knew the answer. I mean, it's a, an age-old problem. We want to see older neighborhoods improved and, or kept up, and, and good things happen. And unfortunately, that leads to an increase in price. So if there are, you know, tools at the city's disposal that allows us to, to be able to keep residents at a current tax rate so that they're not priced out. And if there's a way to do it so that their families aren't, I mean, just because there, maybe there's a, a senior who has owned the home, but, but it's a family home, that the family also not be, not be forced out because of, in a sense, the benefit of, of now living in an area that's a desirable neighborhood. So I would be very interested in looking at whatever tools were available to, you know, ensure that, that, that there is a way to, to keep people in their homes, but to also have these developments occur so that, you know, we are still growing our city or growing different, different parts of the city. And if the downtown ballpark is one of those, I would like to see it benefit the, the folks that are close to it. And, and, and that'll be, that could be done in a variety of ways, separate from the gentrification issue.
Thank you very much. Wes Rogers?
Yeah, once again, I, I agree with what would have already been said. Point out a couple of other things, though. There's been legislation presented that I think is starting to get some momentum that would cap property tax increases, particularly for seniors. And that's something that you could look at in these neighborhoods too. I mean, the bottom line is you're going to get a billion-dollar private investment if you end up building a new stadium. It is going to, it's, which is good. So anytime we're getting investments like that in the city, that's, that's probably a good thing. But as everybody's mentioned, there's going to be some real challenges that come with that. I would hope that we could get some sort of property tax relief out of Jeff City for that, especially for folks that already live in there.
Thank you very much. Sherri Hall?
Yes, when we're looking at this new development of the stadium downtown, a thing that we can't skip over is the fact that we continuously talk about the expansion of affordable housing. Yet while we're looking at the threat of people possibly being priced out of their homes who are already there. I, I think it cannot be skipped over that we need to continue to work towards that end. And if we're making affordable housing, but not also taking care of the property tax on the back end of it, we're, we're basically canceling it's, we're, we're working efforts that's canceling itself out. I think very honestly, we could work towards some more affordability efforts and build construction and different things of that nature. But also working with, which it hasn't been determined yet where the stadium is going to be. But working with the stadium during that construction process, during those permitting processes, during all of those processes that would allow the stadium to come to be, to create some form of funds and structure that would help give some relief to these residents. Especially in the third district, we, we are among the highest tax in the city. And we see the least development. So there has to be a solution for this, but I do pretty much agree with all who have already spoken. There's that overlap we were just talking about.
Sure, absolutely. Okay. Well, I guess if, if everyone ends up on the council, then there will be some agreement on some of these issues we could say.
Need to replay this.
Work together.
Don't tempt me. I might. Okay, the next topic we want to look at is the issue of bike lanes, which have been going in in many parts of the city. And some people, much to the consternation of some, a lot of people think that perhaps they're, you know, not a good thing. But we have already spent quite a bit of money on that, we as a city. So how much more money should be invested in this? Is this a project that we need to keep pushing forward? Does it only benefit a few people? Do we have enough lanes already? What, what are your thoughts on this? And for this, we'll go ahead and start with Sherri Hall.
I'm going to give you the response from citizens that I've heard from, and then mine, right? So I live in the middle of the third district. We can go ahead and be casual here and say the hood, right? People there, they look at these bike lanes and they say, these aren't here for us. They're here because we're going to get bowed up. There's that previous situation with gentrification that we were just talking about, that this construction wasn't for us. We didn't ask for it. Therefore, the next people who ever buy us out, and I never want to see the citizens of our city feel that way. Like, okay, we are constructing things not for them, but for the next people who are going to take our homes over. That is the feeling of it. So for me, from what I've heard of constituents, when they said no, I say no. They feel like they weren't considered. They feel like they're not a part of it. They feel like it's for the next people outside of them, especially with the developments downtown and the proximity of their homes to downtown. They're really feeling the pressure of all these kinds Developments downtown and the proximity of their homes to downtown, they're really feeling the pressure of all these kinds of decisions. So I would honestly include those neighborhood associations, leaders and people in some form of committee. Before any other, any further decisions are made, especially where it concerns the third district.
Okay, thank you. Wes Rogers.
Yeah, so my my full time job is at four thirty-five in Truman on the on the unincorporated Jackson County side. So if I drive downtown, I drive mainly it's on Truman Road, so literally the entire length of Truman Road uh down to the city. And so I don't live in the third district, but I'm I'm I drive it every day and. I I would defer to what the the neighbors in the third district say about that, but it's it's difficult. I it's it's really, it's it's tough. And uh and in the second district up north, you know, most people do rely on cars. And so you've got to tread pretty lightly up here when you start talking about bike lanes and and I know people don't like to hear that, but it's just reality. It's not something that. That Northlander is gonna be that regardless how I feel about him, believe it or not, I bike all the time. I I love to ride my bike in fact and uh. And so I'm pro bike, but you you've got, it's a very, it's a challenging political issue. And I'm gonna pivot a little bit like a good politician and tell you one thing I think would be cool. So my, I've got three little kids and my wife and I take our kids on Line Creek Trail all the time. It's a great trail. It's always used when the weather is nice. I would love to see more trails, especially north of the river. We had one going from downtown up to Platte, one downtown up to Clay. And then one along one sixty-nine. I I think would bring a lot of communities together. I think people would be, I think people would use it. It'd be good for small business, so. Uh maybe instead of talking about bike lanes, we can look more at building more trails like they've done in Johnson County.
Okay, thank you. Uh Melissa Robinson, how would you answer this question?
Um thank you. And so um I picked a fight with bike lanes. I would like to use a fight for my residents regarding bike lanes. Um it's a part of our complete um streets ordinance when they decided to put the bike lanes in at Truman Road. They put the worst uh bike lane infrastructure in the entire city by putting in a simultaneous driving and parking lane. Um on Truman Road. And so when we fight, we win. We were able to come to a compromise and address that. I also was able to pass a legislation that requires um community engagement, constituent engagement. Constituent say so um on how these things are developed and how we're investing in 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 this infrastructure. Um and so again, it's really important that we continue that momentum um that we have that's going. I also led legislation to address um trails in the third district because it's about connectivity. When people can connect and they have transportation, they have opportunities to prosper. And so for the third district, we've been asking for sidewalks for a hundred years, and then you come and put a bike lane, one of which we are not going to use that we don't use. However, we can't get to the bus stop to go to work. We have the lowest dependency on cars in the third district. However, we don't have the transit that we need, especially east west transit. And so we need to pivot the conversation and talk more about connectivity. Connectivity to prosperity. Um and yes, I am not a fan of how bike lanes are being implemented. I think that that's, I've been well documented um there.
Okay, thank you. Um Chris Gehigan.
Thank you. Um I I appreciate all the comments and certainly the comments, Councilwoman Robinson. Uh and if it's any consolation, I've I've knocked over two thousand doors in the Northland in the last month or five weeks or so. Um and there are very strong uh sentiments about not having bike lanes um. In the Northland too. Um because people love their cars in the Northland, and so they 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 see that as more of an impediment. Though uh there is a lot of interest, as Mr. Rogers said, in trails and the and the connectivity that that Councilwoman Robinson talked about is. People do want to be able to ride there. If they want to ride it to work, they want to be able to ride, and they don't really want to be on the street if they can help it. So the bike lanes. While they could be strategically placed so that some people can use them in certain limited situations, I think there's more interest in. Trails um and not just for for pleasure, but but for actual connectivity and and and. Being able to move either to work or to other uh other destinations um in the Northland. So uh nobody seems to have a, you either really love them or you really don't, and I've had some pretty. Uh interesting conversations with, like I say, that feel very strongly, but it's about eighty twenty that people just don't like. I mean, they really latched on to that issue that happened on Truman Road and feeling like uh that the community wasn't involved. And so um kudos for getting that information out there.
Right, thank you. Um next, we're gonna move on to just kind of the nuts and bolts of the city and that's city services. Um and first, we I'd like to have each of the candidates kind of give your rating for. You know, the district that you represent or wish to represent. How would you rate the city right now on garbage, you know, the trash collection, just street maintenance, sidewalks, I've been mentioned. Um emergency and safety. So give us a rating uh for your district. Explain why you gave that rating and what would you do to help, you know, change that or maintain it? Uh for this, let's go ahead and start with Melissa, Melissa Robinson.
I'm sure. So for the third district, um unfortunately, we are living, many of the residents are living in third world conditions. Um we have a lot of trash, a lot of blight. Um I was able to finally pass um a ordinance to do a cut and clean program. Where we're just automatically uh cutting grass, cleaning up the the bulky items, the litter. Uh we do have um was able to uh work to get a litter program where we're paying living wage employment for people to address uh litter. Um it's it's a challenge. Um and we today, even in our budget sessions are. Um I had to ask some very hard questions about, yes, we now have covered recycling bins. That's great. I led that effort alongside. Um Councilwoman Hall, but we also need uh trash carts as well to put lids on on trash carts and be able to contain. Uh more trash in the third district. Um as it relates to crime and violence, again, we lead the pack there. We have um unfortunately, uh we have um. A really strong challenge as it relates to city services, and we need to make sure that the third district receives its respect. That it deserves, that we can continue the momentum, um and that we have a city staff that are on board to. Um ensure that our residents are looked at as taxpayers too.
Great, thank you. Um Chris Gehigan, uh how would you rate the services for the first district?
So for basic services, uh I mean, I will rate it just for myself. I'll I'll base it on the conversations that I've had with folks. Um I would say it's probably a seven. Um there are areas where uh services. Particular areas where in neighborhoods where there's a substantial drop off in services. But I think overall, as far as trash pickup, snow removal, those issues. Because, you know, it is it is in most places, many of the newest parts of the city, so uh you would expect that those things would be better. And you would think the roads would be better than they are. Um and there's been some effort at resurfacing those, but um. You know, we do have a lot of issues with some sidewalks and and things, but we do have sidewalks, and I know there are other parts that don't, so. Um but yeah, I mean, I think generally it's 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 better than most places of the city as far as some of those. Um services that are provided and but we need to 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 do the maintenance on those so that we don't end up having to spend the money to replace them completely. Um as they're beginning to deteriorate in in some places.
Okay, thank you very much. Um Sheri Hall for the third district, how would you reply?
Um looking at the services in the third district, first, starting with not even um trash. Infrastructure or any of that, let's start also at the workers. Um speaking to the city workers, they haven't received a raise in at least ten years or so. Um that's number one. Number two, our trash collection. I've heard from several citizens that say they want to see more than two bags picked up. Um us having only two bags picked up leads to people putting trash everywhere. Um and I don't think that's the responsible thing. I don't think it's the right thing. I don't even think most citizens are doing this. But when some of our workers go look and say, okay, we're gonna figure out who's doing this, and they pull out the dress next door. Where the trash has been dumped up the street, that's a problem. Um citizens should be able to dispose of what they need to dispose of. Um even going back to the bulky item pickup, even on my own block, I saw bulky items sit out there for approximately. Two to three weeks. Yes, are they supposed to take it back inside when it's not gonna go get picked up? Of course, they're supposed to take it back inside. However, when you've put a whole hoopla of stuff outside and you possibly are disabled, don't have time. Um have children, you may not be able to take all that stuff back inside. When we look at the infrastructure. Um a lot of people maybe don't know the process to report on potholes, but when they do get reported on. What is the timeliness between when they're reported and when they're fixed? Um I I see a great deal of issues in my area, and I think one.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh Wes Rogers, how would you reply?
So on trash and snow removal, I feel like it's been pretty good lately um in our neighborhood, and I'm thankful for that. The the one comment that I'll make here is, you know, I've I've ran, this is my third time running for office. I've walked almost every street. I mean, literally every street in the southern part of Clay County, and people don't realize, I mean, these are older neighborhoods. And there's schools where kids can't walk to school. There's lots of places where there's no sidewalks at all. Sometimes there's a sidewalk on one side of the road and it's in lousy shape. Um sometimes there's, you know, there's, it should be a sidewalk and it's and it's just rubble at this point, and and same with curbs too. So uh I I think we're gonna have some challenges in the second district with the way that the new lines were drawn. Because now all of the older parks in the Northland, south of Bray Road, are in one district versus where they used to be in two districts. So we've got. Twice as many problems with not quite as many of the resources at the district level. Um but it but it's important for the kids, right? We talk about connectivity. You talk about, you know, low income families who are trying to get to school, and it's not safe for them to walk because we don't have sidewalks and curbs. We got a problem. So if you're gonna complain about things, you need to have a solution, and I don't yet, but I've got a budget book on my desk at home, and I will do my best to come up with a solution.
Thank you. That's an honest answer. Um next, we'll move on to the issue of crime. But a certain aspect um of the conversation usually revolves around conflict resolution um and the skills. Because oftentimes we hear about gunshots being fired or fights starting or retaliatory. And then also another part of it is, well, what were they really fighting over? And, you know, in hindsight, it always sounds like, well, that was really silly. You know, that was something that a gun needed to be fired over. Um so what are your ideas about implementing conflict resolution to reduce violence in the in the community? And for that, let's go ahead and start with Wes Rogers.
Yeah, so that that's a a great question, a good idea, and I and I am a lawyer, so I was, I mean, I've been involved in the criminal justice system for a long time. As both a public defender and a prosecutor and a lawyer in private practice. And the the thing that that I think we lose sight of sometimes when we're having this conversation, we- once an issue gets to the criminal justice system. The 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 bad stuff's already happening. We're just trying to do our best to clean things up on the back end. So anything that's, you know, we're talking about mental health earlier, we're talking about having good schools, we're talking about having jobs. That's criminal justice reform. That's that's how we're gonna have fewer crimes, and that's a long term investment. Uh so when you're talking about dispute resolution. Outside of the traditional, you know, court system, you know, that makes a lot of sense to me because here's the deal. Jeff City's not gonna let us legislate on guns at the local level. It's not gonna happen. We've got too many guns, too many people die because of the guns. We've got a gun problem in this country. It's embarrassing, it's shameful, and we are not changing that in Jefferson City. So we've got to get really creative at the local level and any form of alternative dispute resolution makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay, thank you. Uh Sheri Hall, what's your reply?
Um I'm a fan of conflict resolution, but not necessarily just in the traditional sense. Um again, I'm a mental health advocate. I am a um. Advocate for peer support. Um there are seven different types of peer support, and one of those types is peer mediation. Peer support is the number one rated intervention for mental health issues, and mental health is definitely a public safety issue. Um when we look at the causes for some of these conflicts, yeah, we can say, okay, what it came down to is such and such. Stepping on such and such a shoe, but what was the history between them? Um one of the blind spots that I think a lot of times we're scared to admit is that a lot of this is spawning from domestic violence. And domestic violence is not just a man hitting a woman. Uh domestic violence are matters of the home and violence in the home in and around the home. And when you see that kind of turmoil, um ACES scores, of course, go up. ACES, um adverse childhood experiences. Um you also see trauma go up. And when people have lived continually in trauma, you see a trauma response. Now, yes, there was just um. Ordinance and legislations passed for about thirty million, over thirty million for violence prevention. I think where we fail in this city with um efforts is that we don't necessarily bring all the players to the table. So what I would do is work to find the players, the ones who are not always mentioned, and bring them to the table.
Thank you. Uh Chris Gehigan.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with what what's been said. I guess I'll add one thing that's maybe a little bit different and absolutely uh support conflict resolution. But I'll give a shout out to um a a an area of the city that doesn't often, I I don't think it complements, and that's the Kansas City Municipal Court. Um there are nationally award winning specialty courts, restorative justice courts within the municipal court system. Um including drug court, vet court, um and a variety of other things to connect people to services and to help. Uh with when those issues rise to that level, and the nice thing about being able to address them, kind of like you're saying with conflict resolution before they get to even that level. If you can, you know, address some of those issues at the municipal level, which is an ordinance violation, not even the level of a misdemeanor. And you can save people a lot of problem uh farther down the road. Um domestic violence is a huge issue. Um in twenty nineteen, there were eight hundred and sixty-seven strangulation cases filed in Kansas City Municipal Court. In domestic violence court, which is a outrageous uh amount of those type of cases, which is a very violent offense. But um like I say, I want to give kudos to the to the 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 judges of that court that have have really made an effort and the prosecutors to. To uh try to find a way to get people help, restorative first before, you know. Before they get any further or unless the person just won't participate or help themselves.
Thank you. Um and I actually may follow up with you on that strangulation. It's, yeah, I mean, just, it probably just.
Oh, it's crazy. I mean, it's just, I couldn't believe it when I heard it and.
Yeah, uh the the um, you know, law enforcement, whenever they see that, that is like just a red flag for.
Basically. With a personal. Later, yeah, the violence and the personal nature of of string, you know, doing that is, you know.
It's an intimate act of extreme violence. Um yeah, that's been studied. Melissa Robinson, um your thoughts on conflict resolution for uh solving some of our crime problems?
Um thank you so much for this uh the question. Um it's a very important one. Um yes, I do believe in conflict resolution. However, that is a point in time, um and what we need to do is look more upstream as to what's happening. I speak to young kids, uh young people on the streets every day. I participated as a school board member. I was on the school board for five years. Um and looked at the anatomy of what kids are going through every day that leads them to this uh place. Um the number one predicate, if you're gonna be a perpetrator or victim of crime, is a high school graduation. Um the other thing that we need to look at is just opportunity. Uh young kids that are um participating in the underground economy. They will tell you, I make a hundred and seventy dollars um on this corner. Um and so I need job opportunities that are living wage job opportunities. And so we need to think more about hope. Uh we need to think more about addressing desperate situations. We need to think more upstream than, oh, people just don't know how to solve conflict, and that's why they're um in, you know, a fit of rage and don't know what to do. How did they get there? I mean, there's things that happen up to those points, and there's things that we can do. Uh to intervene. Um and the number one thing is we need, if there, we need a war on violence. We need to make sure that we have the adverse energy on employability, making sure young kids get what they need in order to be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's kind of that connectivity to everything. I think I don't think it was quite stated this way, but the toxic stress of some environments um in some family situations definitely does play out. Um this is a little bit related. When we're talking about the diversity of both our KCPD, Kansas City Police Department. And our fire departments, that's been an issue that's just been ongoing for years and years here in Kansas City. Um what more can be done to change just the culture within both of those organizations? To perhaps encourage more people from diverse backgrounds to be willing to serve in those departments. To perhaps encourage more people from diverse backgrounds to be willing to serve in those departments. Um, you know, I know there's been a lot of different types of outreach with HBCUs, the community colleges are changing a lot of the efforts, but I'd like to hear more of your thoughts of how this could go. Let's start with Chris Gehagen for this.
Thanks. Um, I, I, I wish I had answered that and I really don't. I did actually watch the, uh, council meeting this afternoon where the fire, the, the report of the fire department was discussed and it, um, obviously is a situation that, that, um, probably citywide needs to be addressed. Um, uh, certainly within that, within the cultures of those two de- departments and I, I now wanna go back and read that report because I believe there was some discussion from the consultants about sort of the nature of those, that type of profession, which kind of tends to, tends to create that culture. So, um, but as far as, uh, I mean, I think it, law enforcement, fire, those areas in general are having trouble recruiting anyone. Um, and I, I'm guessing that that's just exacerbated for, uh, persons of color or women in those professions. And so um, I don't really have the answer for that, but I would be interested in, in, in learning about that.
Okay, Wes Rogers.
Yeah, you know, that's what, and I keep going back to Jeff City because that's my personal experience, but we passed that and I fought really hard against it, but we passed against the, uh, we, we got rid of the residency requirement for the police a couple of years ago. And so now you've got, you know, you're, you're going the other direction from where we need to be going on that. And, you know, we've got a new chief, so it'll be up to her to come up with good solutions, but we're just gonna be a lot better off when y- you know, when people that are our neighbors are the ones who are uh, you, the people in, in those positions. So I, I'm gonna, yeah, like I said, I wish I had a better answer. I agree with what's been said, but, um, I, I hope, yeah, I don't have a good answer for that.
No, that, that's fine. Um, actually even, there's more things that were happening today in Jeff City, just for our audience to know. Um, you know, looking at lifting some of the caps on how much we can pay the KCBD chief of police. It was out of line, much lower than some of our peer cities. Um, so that's something that they're dealing with right now. Melissa Robinson.
Thank you. Uh, I always try to stay as close to residents and constituents as possible. I hosted a town hall with a group of over a hundred, uh, young people. And I asked them for their theories of change. They came up with three. One was around health. Uh, one was around education and employment, but one around crime and violence and really building the opportunity to engage informally with police. Um, young people, um, really, uh, talk very deeply about their desire to develop relationships with, um, police officers. And so I think that that would naturally help us with some of our recruitment when, um, those relationships are developed. You and I, Mary Sanchez, we participated in any town where it was a week-long camp for kids where we had an officer who was in plain clothes the entire week. And then at the end of the week, he put on his uniform and all the kids were like, wow. You know, we need more of that. Uh, when I served on the school board, we started a program to, um, get more young people involved in the fire academy. The issue is the paramedic test. They need the appropriate scaffolding, not that they can't pass the test, but they need the appropriate interventions to help them meet those marks. On Saturday, we're hosting a citywide, um, scholarship fair and training fair for kids at the municipal auditorium. And we'll have the police department there, the fire department there, over thirty colleges there. Um, and really encouraging, uh, young people to take advantage of these jobs, um, that are available to them.
Thank you. Yeah, and just, um, for the insight that the anytime program is still around. It's a wonderful leadership training program for young people. And with amongst the staff, which is like more than about forty people, there always was a law enforcement officer as part of the staff, the adult staff. It was a male or a female. And throughout the week, oftentimes the young people, the teenagers, they were fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Um, they would really bond with that person. And oftentimes just be very shocked when at another portion of the camp, we would have that person come out in their full dress blues uniform. Um, and that kind of created a lot of interesting conversations, so.
Well, if I might add, I, I'm not trying to inter- but I, to piggyback on that, you know, I was a, a attorney for the Hickam Mills School District for twenty-eight years and, and we had off-duty officers in the schools and one of the issues we had to trade on eventually was because we had so many students that wanted to come up and hug the officers. Um, because they'd never seen him, I think had been exposed in that context to them as ordinary people who were just there. They weren't, they, because they couldn't enforce school policies or rules. They were there to, in the event something happened and they became very friendly with the students and the students became comfortable with them. And so, uh, they developed some, some, some pretty strong relationships. And I know students were upset when a couple of the officers retired um, and left the school. So I, I know that, you know, it's, you know, me, and, and I, I have to think it had some impact on the officers as well. Um, in, interacting and developing relationships with the students in that, in that way.
No, that's fine. I actually don't mind spending a little bit more time on that question. Um, and that's the SRO officers, the school resource officers, which there's a lot of controversy about them. Um, and I, I will say though, I'm a graduate of Hickam Mills High School.
Oh, I went to Ruskin.
Which are not the high school itself. That gets into changes in the city. It's, you know, back to just one high school. It's Ruskin High School, which I was very proud of because I ran more track miles there than any other stadium in this entire region.
Well, I'm a Ruskin graduate, so I hit a dog in that fight. So, yeah, but no, but that's a community change. When you change school district boundaries, when you change, you close a high school, it impacts that community. And it really does have a, have a detrimental impact on the psychology of the people that live there. When you close schools and empty schools are in your neighborhoods and, I mean, all of those, you know, have an impact.
That's a good segue to give, um, to give a little bit more, uh, time here to Sheri Hall, because she's in the third district. And the Kansas City School District is really going through, once again, some of those not even growing pain, shrinking pains of having to decide what to do with schools. Um, you know, certainly issues of policing and the diversity of the, of the department that we have now and the fire department are very imperative for the third district. So Sheri Hall, when, um, when that is the topic of conversation, what are your thoughts about how, you know, as a city council member, you could possibly help impact changing that culture?
Um, one, the people I talked to are on the flip side. Um, so a lot of times trying to have these conversations with young people and community members, um, when you have forums and different things like that, you will get to the table people who really wanna be involved in that. Um, a lot of times I find myself speaking to people who don't wanna be involved. Um, whether I'm at a protest or rally or just in my office dealing with people with issues of mental health. These people don't wanna be involved, so they have very different viewpoints. And when they look at the profession of a police officer, um, if you already feel like your hands are tied in your neighborhood, why do I wanna go into a profession that is highly, i- it's just reactionary. I'm not doing anything to prevent. Uh, I speak to a lot of young people and a lot of people of varying ages who have more of an abolitionist mindset rather than I'm gonna go into this profession. Um, with that type of mindset, I, I don't see any reason why that mindset cannot work with what's already in place. Um, policing has been around for centuries. Maybe it's time to change the way that the job is done. Maybe some more preventative efforts from that side rather than reactionary. If people knew that was possible, even with some of the new things that have been instated within police forces, if, if they knew that that was a possibility in that profession, they might be more prone to come in and want to train and be a part of forces.
No, thank you. I, I appreciate that comment. I think one thing as a reporter, and I've written on policing for years now, decades, um, when I'm in different audiences, I hear a lot of crossover. But they're completely different audiences, whether it's an abolitionist, perhaps a young person, an older civil rights leader who literally remembers, uh, you know, I mean, King being murdered.
Yeah.
You know, it, it, it is amazing how much crossover and sometimes people argue with me that that is true, but it is true. I've heard it for too many years. Um, and I think it's just who can be the connectors, which is perhaps what we would hope from a city council member.
And Mary, if I can, it is blackish. Oh, I'm sorry, Sheri.
Oh, it's okay. I, I think everyone wants the same thing. I think everyone wants to feel safe. I think everyone wants the mechanisms, even though you have a lot of people say, hey, let's defund police, but the same breath, we still have to call nine-one-one. I think people wanna feel safe when they call and ask for help. And ultimately, being able to provide solutions based around that is really going to be important for us to be able to move forward as a city and even as a nation.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say, you brought up the civil rights, uh, movement, which we are now, uh, reviving the quality of life report that was done, um, after, I'm not civil rights, the civil disobedience, um, that happened after the King riots. Um, even here in Kansas City. But one of the recommendations amongst gaining local control of the police was one of the recommendations and that was the late nineteen sixty-eight. But, uh, was having a youth academy in the high schools. Um, working with young people to transition them during their, their high school years and they would have a youth police academy. That's something that I think we should be, um, looking at and making sure young people are connected to um, really, uh, to roles where protecting and serving is, you know, what's happening. Um, and so we need to make sure that those, uh, relationships are codified. I apologize, but you mentioned, um, after the, uh, the King assassination and the riots and we have resurged that and hopefully we'll have some, some, um, recommendations that will help us with our diversity on the, on the force.
Yeah, that'll be interesting. I mean, we quoted that when I was at the Kansas Star and I've done it now for PBS, that it was like the number one recommendation was um, local control. But, uh, you know, and actually really, so many of these ideas do circle back. So I think that's what's interesting, different perspectives here from different portions of the city is, I wanna say even in the magnet program, there was some of that of how do you move children from, you know, I think some of that was, uh,
Yeah, the law enforcement academy.
Military, yeah.
Um, Northeast was, was our law enforcement academy, yes.
That's right. So if these are new ideas, old ideas getting refreshed. And I see we had, at least briefly, another member here joining our conversations. We're gonna go ahead and, um, let him deal with that a little bit. And let's see. Talk about more in terms of just the the wholeness of our whole community here. We often talk about the Missouri River as being a divide. Where I've heard for years that truce is a divide for east-west and, you know, the river would have been for north-south. Um, you know, at different points in time and frankly, it depends on from which perspective you're speaking in the community. I've heard Warnall, I've heard Rock Hill Road, so it kinda just shifts. It's a very much a perspective thing. So as a member of the city council, what efforts would you have made in the past to reach out to citizens who might be on the other side of where you live, where your main core of, say, your family is or your, most of your lived experiences are? You know, how would you help bridge some of those divides within our community that have been almost geographic and frankly, quite historical? Uh, Sheri Hall, why don't you go ahead and start on that one?
So I have quite a bit of experience reaching the cross lines. Um, number one, one of the ways that I work with regards to mental health is I work in both Kansas and Missouri. Um, my saying is we're not gonna be carrying our problems back and forth across the river. We are the same on both sides. Um, along with that is arts. Arts is a great connector. Um, arts allow you to connect sometimes without saying any words. I have an organization, East of Red Art House, where we do provide arts in the community and we invite people from all over to participate in arts experiences. And they are had multiple places as well as poetry for personal power. I myself, being an artist, really believe in the power of the connectivity of an audience and a person. Um, at that point, you become community. So really utilizing our artists, um, making sure that we have infrastructures to pay those artists for the work that they do because arts is activism. And when arts are, when artists are put in the space of activists and being able to speak and give voice, not only to issues, but also facilitate rooms for discuss discussions and solutions, we often find common ground.
Thank you. Melissa Robinson.
Um, thank you for the question. I've, uh, demonstrated, uh, whether it was, you know, all the heat that I took on the soccer field, which, you know, voting and supporting that in the Northland to the fourth district in, um, addressing gentrification in the three fifty-three, uh, program. But the reality of it is, is that we need a council that, um, that is connected, that we're, we're able to build a shared vision. Much of my work on incentive reform was more about what is the city's vision for economic development? What needs to happen in the first district, the second district, the fourth district, the fifth district, the sixth district and the third district? And how do we get all of that done together? Um, an organization can only move at the speed of trust. And so it is important for us collectively to trust that Wes Rogers knows what is good for the second district and to lean into that and for him to trust, have that vice versa trust. And so I think a lot of our issues are around, how do we collectively work as a team? Knowing that rising tides lift all boats, um, and also uh, coming from a lens of equity and understanding the historical intentional disinvestment in some of our areas and how sometimes those areas need more stimulation in order to achieve parity. That's what we want. We want every resident to be able to have the same dependability and the same level of service as their neighbors, wherever, whatever district they live in.
Thank you. Wes Rogers, how would you approach these issues of some of our more historical divides?
So I'm not gonna be able to answer it any better than she did, I'll tell you that. But with, with that being said, I agree largely to what she said, but I, I will add a couple of things, you know. You, we're one city, right? And, and like the councilwoman said, the, the better off every part of the city is, the better off we're all gonna be. And you gotta trust, you know, that district's leaders to tell you what they need and, and then hope that they'll trust you when you tell them what, what the second district needs. Uh, but you know, that said, part of the reason, so when I left the legislature, I was not planning on running for office again. Um, and what, what really made me change my mind is I really love Kansas City. I love my second district, but uh, north of the river, south of the river, east of truce, west of truce. We got a great city and we need leadership that embraces the whole city. And when, and I love the fact that this is nonpartisan, I'm one out of partisan politics. That said, when we were in the legislature, half of the Democratic caucuses, the Kansas City area, right? So I've already been on a team with people north and south of the river for the last four years, solving problems together. And the thought of doing that with the same folks at the local level where we actually can make a difference, that sounds awesome to me. So count me in.
Thank you. Chris Gehagen.
Uh, yeah, I, so one of the primary reasons that I am running is because I think that the council right now is broken as far as trust and relationships go. I mean, I was, I graduated from Ruskin High School. I mean, I was born and raised in the sixth district. Um, I ultimately moved to the Northland. Um, but, you know, I, I represented Hickam Mills School District for twenty-eight years and I would sit and hear people complain that, you know, all the money's going north. Uh, we all have sidewalks and, you know, and, and curbs. And then I moved to the Northland and I'm going to community meetings and I hear people saying, all the money's going south. We don't have curbs and sidewalks. Uh, and so it is the same issue and it is the same problem. And I one hundred percent agree with Councilwoman Robinson that it is a question of being, uh, building relationships and being able to trust that the information that you're getting. Uh, and what you have to rely on, the people that are in the district to be able to relate that information and then have that, those relationships so that you know, when I say, well, this is an important issue for the first district, she, you know, like, people can trust that. And when they come to me and say, this is an important issue and we need to work on this, that, that I know that's genuine and, and that we're not fighting about. You know, we've created political demons or, you know, things that don't even really exist. And so I would love to see that divide between north and south, which just I personally, it's just my personal lived experience. And, and like I say, I, and I'm very interested in learning about these other divides that exist in the city and, and need to be removed as well.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to another, um, issue here. And that's kind of just how you would manage yourself if you're elected as like a steward of the taxpayers' money. Um, so how would you represent city taxpayers in the context of like, say, the proposed downtown ballpark? Um, unanticipated expenses, I might come up with power and light district as we're making that, uh, you know, stay profitable throughout history, the history of the city here. Um, you know, tax abatement, those. History, the history of the city here, um, you know, tax abatement, those sort of issues. What is your attitude towards this? Melissa, go ahead and start.
Um, sure. So I currently serve on the finance committee and so um, really uh, I'm aware of. In in terms of financial stewardship, what's happening there. Um, as it relates to tax incentives and tax abatements. We know that developers, the greatest thing that we could offer them is certainty. That they know the rules of of how to do business with the city. So the council, it's very important that we get on the same page as it relates to that. Um, in addition to that, we have to understand if we're having a crisis with violence, we can't continue to rob schoolchildren. Uh, funds through these tax abatements that they don't even benefit from because the development. Is nowhere near where they live or go to school. So we have to be more judicious in that and we do that by making sure we have a shared vision. That the the tail is now not wagging the dog. The council has to have set priorities. Of what we want to see the the future of our city be and then incent developers to do that. Um, I led an effort to make sure that our downtown arena, um, the T-Mobile Center had a five-year capital improvement plan. Don't come to us year after year, you know, saying, oh, we need lights or we need seats. I want to know what you need over the next five years. And let's see how we can invest in that. Um, so I think that it is critical. We will have a structural imbalance as it relates to our revenue um. In the next couple of years, this council, we're going through priority-based budgeting. Um, and so this council will have some tough decisions to make. We need to add additional pressure to make sure that our projections. Are a little bit more um, more stable. Um, right now, we have a huge influx it of 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 revenue. That has come over the tax projections, but we don't have a plan for how to spend that. So that there, we're gonna need to look at how do we implement policies to make sure our reserve is at a place that's going to. Help us in the downturn year. So those are a couple of, a couple of thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Sherry Hall, how would you approach this issue?
Um, looking at this issue, one of the things that I see, um, and I'll take the time to agree with um Melissa here is that. The planning. We get this influx of money and the planning isn't there. Um, however. Looking at the way that we plan things, I am an advocate of service user input and having people at the table. To also give their input in their mind about how things happen, what's important to them. Um, yes, the council is the elected officials and we have been entrusted by the citizens to make these decisions, but it doesn't mean that the input stops there. Um, I am an advocate of having against citizens at the table, not just town halls, but actually going into the community and seeing. Exactly what they say. Again, just like you had said with your um reporter experience. Yes, you get one set of people at a town hall, but then you go to another totally different set of people and you hear a totally different thing. In the middle, everybody's pretty much wants the same thing. They want safety, they want opportunity, they want city services to work. Um, they want a solution to crime, blight, homelessness. And the only way that we come to those resolutions is being able to come together. And figure out how our resolutions affect everybody involved, because we can definitely make some decisions. That accidentally slight certain parts of our people. And I think traditionally that has happened in the third district.
Okay, thank you. Um, Chris Gehigan, go ahead and take this question.
All right, I think I've got five minutes for the things to say, so I'm gonna try to talk really fast. Um, so my. Evolution or history with uh development is pretty interesting because as a young lawyer, I. Ended up representing Hickman Mills School District, not because I went there, but just by happenstance. And one of the first things that I was involved with were TIF plans. Um, and so, you know, as a. Fiery, you know, full of feminine vigor, young lawyer. You know, we had this belief that there was just this big barrel of money that developers had and we needed to elbow our way in there. And get close enough to be able to scoop out our share of of those dollars. Um, and I think in some of these things that I've seen come along, maybe that really was the case, but by and large, over time and learning how these projects work. And developing relationships with lawyers and and other parties that were involved in these. Um. We were able to try to or re, you know, recover some of those uh dollars. Um, and when there were projects that I did, developers love this term and it drives me crazy, but don't pencil out. Um, and so we would come up with other ideas. Well, if you've got an anchor tenant, then how about internships for school, you know, for, I mean, so there are things that you could do. Um, on a, on a little bit of a s- a smaller scale uh to minimize the impact of those things. And then. TIF plans are done differently in the Northland. They don't take as much of the of the property tax. Um, and so they're easier to do. Or less impactful or negatively impactful um here. Um, and so I I, you know, when I came from south to north, that was one of the things. I made some comment about TIF plans. Wait a minute, that's not how we.
Thank you, Mr. Gehigan.
Yep, that was about a half of what I.
Well, I'm sure we'll have other forums, um, and you will have shortly your uh the chance for your closing remarks. I do want to allow uh Wes Rogers a chance to answer on this question, then we are going to move into our closing remarks.
I had, um, sorry, I had a, our three-year-old needed some help there. Uh, so I didn't hear all of the question. I'll just say this. Um. You know, w- we're sure the taxpayer money, right? So when we're talking about a downtown ballpark being the easiest example, because that's what we're all talking about right now. It's, I say they're talking about a private billion dollar investment, that's, that's. A great thing in theory, right? But what does that look like for the taxpayers on the backside? And it's just hard to answer these questions. Uh, big picture, you almost have to go case by case. And the bottom line is we just need to make sure we're making deals where where all taxpayers are winning, not just. Not just the big guys.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. Let's go ahead and move on to um our closing. This uh. Frankly, the time has passed very quickly because I think we've just had a really great, engaging comments. I'm gonna be looking back at a lot of these. Um, trying to take notes here, but you're just offering a lot of wisdom. Uh, so let's go ahead with the closing. You have your two minutes um. To offer, you know, however you want to state things. Melissa, why don't you go ahead and start?
Uh, sure. Um, thank you. Um, I uh really appreciate the opportunity to share with you all today. Um, I have. Uh, really done a lot in the community and have done a lot uh in my service uh to third district residents. We've passed landmark landmark legislation claiming racism as a public health crises. Uh, passing the blueprint for violence prevention in healthy communities, which we've talked about. Um, I did the first ever zip code based funding in the history of the city when the pandemic hit. And we wanted to make sure that our most vulnerable residents were getting what they need needed. Um, and also. Uh, as we move forward, there's a lot of work that needs to, that's left to be uh done. One is working on community land trusts, um, ensuring that we don't have mass um gentrification and we have affordability. Um, we passed legislation that we're continuing to work on around a robust trash and blight removal program. The city has torn down a lot of uh properties in the third district. We need to invest in infill housing. Um, and bring back the middle class to the third district so that we have a diverse economy. Um, one of the things that we talk about affordable housing and the housing crisis that we're in. We know that the housing crisis is going to be compounded by the expiration of low-income tax credits. That are a majority are in the third district. And so, um, my opponent and I, we have similar answers. Um, we have similar beliefs. Uh, it, the decision that voters really have to make is. Do the residents of the third district, do they deserve disruption at this point of momentum? This is an eight-year job. If I wasn't doing my job, then yes, I deserve to be um. Replaced, but I've been working hard. I've demonstrated success and we want to continue on. Um, again, the third district residents do not deserve to have disruption at this time. Continuity of council leadership is critical.
Okay, thank you, Melissa Robinson. Um, Sherry Hall, since you're also a candidate for the third district. Uh, why don't you go ahead and uh give us your closing remarks next?
Absolutely. Um, as you've been here, again, my name is Sherry Purpos Hall, running for third district and district. And yes, I am would be new to the council. Um. Just starting with the things that I would want to address. Number one, again, social determinism improvement with an emphasis on affordable housing and jobs. Um, social determinant improvement is critical to the residents of Kansas City, especially the third district. My program management background would assist me in creating program synergies between existing programs and developing partnerships to create solutions. Um, I would also work with the council to ensure that the Office of Citizens Engagement is fully functional and operates with transparency. So that organizations within the city can use that resource to work with us to provide services and access. Um, as a nonprofit CEO, I have firsthand experience with the difficulties of getting funding and organizational improvements. I also have experience with vendor management, change management, program management. And there are many agencies within the city that have viable programs that would help with many of the city's problem areas. These agencies could also have greater impact. With more funding and increased capacity and resources. Um, they should also be vending to the city. Uh, so driving more money and more things that way and greater access to healthcare. Um, yes, my opponent is a part of the Healthcare Coalition. Um, she has four years experience on the council. But what I can offer again is my lived experience and also a different outlook and a different um perspective on things. I don't see a replacement as a disruption. I do see it as an improvement if that person has a different perspective. And looks at different remedies towards problem solutions. In the third district, we have seen the same issues on and on and on for years. It is time for a change.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to Wes Rogers, who is running for the second district. Um, your closing remarks, please.
So first of all, I'll say that it's really tough to be on one of these candidate forums with an incumbent because. They're really smart. They know all the answers. So I I appreciate it here in the councilwoman's answers and I. And I've learned a lot and I wrote down several things to follow up and learn more about. So I'm thankful for that. Uh, the other thing I was gonna say during my initial remarks that I didn't have time to finish is on broadband, you know, we always talk about accessibility in these rural communities, which. Which is important, but there's accessibility issues in Kansas City, including north of the river and in the second district where. Um, e- either it's just not affordable and or frankly, some people just don't have physical access even in the cities and people don't realize that. And so there is some money in Jeff City that we've got to invest in that. And I would like to use some of those prior relationships. To go down Jeff's, hey, let's let's invest in broadband, not just in rural Missouri, but also uh in the cities. And that's an example of something where I think we can. Instead of fighting with them like we tend to do, um, build together. I think that'd be a really good thing. Um, and then lastly, you know, we live in a great city. The next few years are gonna be critical to our future. I think that the folks running for the council are pretty sharp. And I look for.
Oops. It looks like we might have lost. Um, why don't you go ahead and start your your closing remarks, um, Chris Gehigan?
Yes, yeah, my name is Chris Gehigan. I'm asking for your vote for Kansas City's first district. Um, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and and Ms. Sanchez for for moderating. Um, I'm excited about uh the future of Kansas City. I think we have a tremendous opportunity. We're kind of at a point where over the next several years. Um. The eyes of the country and and even the world are gonna be be on us and and I want them to see a a a city government. That gets along and that uh is working together um to mi- make life uh better for everybody in the city. Um, because that will encourage other people to move your businesses to relocate here. Um, and and to help us a- attract and develop uh even more opportunities. Um, I think the biggest takeaway I've gotten over the last six weeks or so, knocking out it over two thousand doors. Um, is that people of first district really care about the city and want to be informed and involved um in the processes that determine the future. Um, and I'll continue to listen and communicate um with people in my district and with the. Uh, fellow council members, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, um, so that we can accomplish those things. And while the the opportunities before us are 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 exciting, and I will lose focus on those basic city services that still need to be done. Trash needs still needs to be picked up. Snows or streets need to be plowed, um, potholes. Uh, sewer sidewalks in places where and and installing them in places where we don't have them. And there are places in the new first district that are not connected to. Santeri Sewer. So I mean, there are places like that 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 need work um in the Northland. I believe government should be aspirational. Um, I believe it should provide opportunity. Um, and I I want to be a part of that. I think it should also be competent and efficient. And I will work hard every day to make sure that it is. Um, unfortunately, at a point in my life where I it it, when elected, I will retire. So that I can devote myself full-time so that I'm available to fellow council members and 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 especially to the people in the first district with time to meet. Early and late. Um, so thank you. Uh, if you want more information, Chris, uh, Chris for KC, F O R, Chris for KC dot com.
Great, thank you so much. Um, I really appreciate everyone's time here. Chris Gehigan for the first district, Wes Rogers for the second, Melissa Robinson and Sherry Hall, Sherry Purpose Hall. Um, for the third district. And thank you also to the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson County, Clay and Platt. Uh, we are one big region. Um, I have a deep respect for anyone who steps forward wanting to run for public office. I know it is not a hard. It's not an easy thing to do to even put yourself out there. Um, what you're doing matters and thank you for all of our listeners tonight. And be sure and vote.
By the way, can I just say something? Wes Rogers just texted me and said he didn't know what happened, but tell everyone, thank you.
So thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Rogers as well. I mean, everyone's participation was just wonderful this evening. And I really, I appreciate the civility and just this a really rich and engaging conversation. And everyone here this evening made that happen. So thank you very much and good night.
Thank you.